The Board of Custer County Commissioners Meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is September the 5th, 2018, 9 o'clock, 8:00. Mr. Prince, would you do the honor, sir, of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be happy to, thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, call the role.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None, sir.
I have none. Audience introduction. Why don't we start over on the right today, please?
Take your time.
Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
Thank you. Did you get that spelling okay? All right, good. I don't believe we have any amendments to approve, Commissioner Items. I would start this morning, just for the heck of it. The Fair Board, I wanted to report to you, is trying to put together a meeting to build a strategic plan for capital, long-term capital improvements out at the fairgrounds. So, Christie Doons from Dola, a gentleman from University of Colorado Denver in their engineering department or architectural department.
Working for Christie or something?
Not working for them, no. They are just people invited to this meeting. So, and some Fair Board members and commissioners have been invited to attend that meeting, tentatively, right now it's scheduled for the 17th of September at 1:00 PM, location to be determined. Certainly, there was no intent to exclude you, gentlemen. They just sent me the email because I am the point of contact for the Fair Board, apparently. So if you're interested in that, I will continue to glean out information and forward that to you. I don't know, I think what they want to do is like everyone else, go through the proper steps and try and position themselves so that they can go after some grants. I wouldn't be surprised eventually if they're not going to want the county to...
Put her name on a Dola grant, I can see it coming.
Well, to own the property. They're not probably going to get a grant without it, but I don't know, we'll see.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's see.
Yeah, but anyway, I just wanted to bring up speed on that. This meeting thing's just kind of come up the last couple of days, and I got an email yesterday about the potential dates, so...
I'll be on vacation, but I would have pretended, had I been there?
Seventeenth?
September is...
He's been trying to leave forever.
I'll come back on the 18th.
Oh, I thought it was 6th through 16th. I would pass on your condolences.
Condolences.
So, yeah, exactly. So anyway, they're excited about that, and I think, you know, they'll try to get things moving forward. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Commissioner Candace?
My turn. I'll say, where do you want to talk about this?
Under Old Business.
Yeah, under Old Business. I'm not going to bring, yesterday had a nice talk with Trent, and this morning, I should say, with Cheryl Trent, and we'll discuss that under Old Business.
Okay, actually, it's under New Business.
Or under New Business postponed.
Yeah, so, okay. Either way. All right, anything else?
No.
Mr. Prince?
Ironically, two calls yesterday from different constituents, different areas of the county. Actually, not calls, they came into my store, and both of them complimented on how Oak Creek Grade is the best they have ever seen. And another one, it was, I forgot the name of the road, but the road on the other side of Rosita when you're going towards Alpine.
It's called School Field.
School Field.
School Field.
Yeah.
And both people were complaining.
That's the one they were complaining about.
Well, they're a mile and a half, but I asked them how...
No, no, they were complaining about the bad job putting over the...
Overlay.
Overlay.
Well, the comment I got yesterday was, "Thank you for fixing the potholes and the cracks in the road."
That's what they did, that's why they did it.
So, I just wanted to pass on that.
I'm glad to hear that.
Well, there may be some who are not particularly pleased, there are some who are very pleased, I just wanted to mention that.
Good.
Yeah, that's good enough. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, yours too.
Gary, I'm going to be glad to hear.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
I also stopped down at Road and Bridge this morning, and I would encourage, if you haven't, to do that, because that box covert is being assembled down there, and that's quite a project.
Big, big deal.
Three thousand bolts.
He was telling me about the buckets that they're in.
You'd better get them all, because it's not going to be strong enough without them.
Three thousand bolts, put that together, and pretty interesting. So, yeah, just maybe after the meeting, just run down there and drive, you gotta, when you go in, go around to the left, and then you go in behind the shop, and it's sitting there. I did get out, but you can certainly see it without even getting out of the vehicle. But, yeah, it's going to be quite a project.
How cool.
So, very cool, yeah. Some serious ribbing going over the top of it for structural support.
Put this all together.
Good. Okay, anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner Items? Attorney Items?
Nothing for today.
Okay, are we scheduled for an executive session?
I understand Shannon will be available.
Yes, spoke with him yesterday, and he, when we get an idea, I think Ms. Brenda will call him and let him know what time we think that will happen, so... Administrative Assistant Items? Public Comment?
We've got a new public here, he can introduce himself. We missed that.
I think everybody knows.
Oh, okay, hi Bob.
Okay, we'll move on to Staff Reports then. Airport is first up. Mr. Jolly, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, good.
Good to see you, sir, I'm good.
Good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wanted to make a formal presentation of the maps of property from Ms. Jackie Hobby.
Thank you very much.
She said she's tired of getting paper cuts off of them, so she wanted you to have those.
She's nothing but, if not magnanimous.
Ah, yeah. How's things?
Good. As a matter of fact, in August, we had a very good month.
Good.
Did you make copies? Are you just going to tell us?
I'm just going to...
Oh, good, I like that.
No extra paperwork from me. Okay, in August, we sold 616 gallons of fuel. We didn't have as much fuel sales during the fly-in as I thought we would have, but anyway, it was a slow month for the fly-in.
You went down to Walsenburg, where it was cheaper, probably.
Yes, I know. In September, so far this month, we sold about 100 gallons of fuel. Right now, we have 544 gallons in the tank. On the 18th of August, we had a work day at the airport, getting ready for the fly-in, and it was very, very successful. All the Board members were there, except one who was out of town, and we had three volunteers. We got that fence that was broken down next to the fuel tank, we got that fixed, we got a new DP gauge installed, we fixed our ground wires, we got the grass cutting, weed eating done.
Parking signs up.
Parking signs up. On the 25th, we had our fly-in, and it was very successful. Was the best one we've had to date. A lot of public interest, a lot of...
A lot of airplanes.
A lot of airplanes, a lot of people from the town were there, and everybody had a good time looking at the airplanes.
Good, how'd the grill work?
The grill worked great.
Good.
It really did.
Pancakes galore and sausage.
Yeah, we had pancakes and sausages, and orange juice, and coffee, and all that stuff.
Good.
We had a lot of the local airplanes parked out on the taxiway, and we had some radio-controlled airplanes parked out on the runway, and people seemed to really enjoy it.
Did they fly those, I missed it if they did?
No, they didn't, they didn't. Not during the fly-in, they did after. I'm leaving Friday morning to go to Montana, and Dan Green is going to be the acting airport manager.
How long are you going to be gone?
About a week. I'm only going to spend a couple of days up in Butte, Montana. Dallas has got our budget ready, and he'll have it turned in by Friday. During the month, we've done a lot of repairs that needed to be done. We've put off some of the repairs that need to be done because they may be taken over by events. We did put a new DP gauge. We are going to order new fuel filters for the fuel system before the end of the year. We're also going to get a unauthorized fuel filter removed from our dispenser. So those things are on tap. Like I said, we've put off some repairs, trying to anticipate things that may happen later on in the year, and one of the things we did put off was the overfill protection. We've never had a problem even coming close to overfilling our tank, because we only take about 2,000 gallons at a time. And the tank will hold 5,400 gallons, so we've sort of hold off on that because that's an expensive item to replace.
Yeah, it's a waste of money if we move it when we move.
Right, and if we're going to be moving anyway, that will be overtaken by events. So that's about it for the month.
Good. Question, I can't...
Sure.
Over the last month or so, one or two people asked me about private pilot lessons at our airport. Do we have anybody who does that, or is that a possibility, or do we need to go down to Pueblo to do that?
No, there is, we've got a couple of instructor pilots at the airport. Bob Giacomelli is an instructor, Bill Geipel is an instructor, and Johnny Smith is an instructor.
Thank you.
Do they use their own planes for that?
Yes.
Did you get the game out of the building in time for the fly-in?
Yes.
Did you?
Yes.
Wow, that looked like that was going to be a chore.
Is that fire truck still weeping?
No, they came and got the fire truck, took it down to...
Got a new valve put in?
I don't know what it was leaking from, it was...
They claimed it was the packing on the valve that made valves.
Anyway, it is fixed, it's not dripping. And it's back, so we got the fire truck and everything as well. By the way, we're at 455 on our fuel, and the average within 50 miles of our airport is 458, so we're right there.
And you've ordered a new fuel pump from QT Pod?
Yes, yes, and it's supposed to be delivered sometime around the 1st of October. And right now, how...
But it's not, right, I mean, we're going to store it.
Right, it's going to be stored, and how in the world they ever got my home address, I'll never know, but that's where it is planned.
You've been on the internet again, haven't you?
But that's where they're planning on delivering it, is to my house, it's being delivered UPS, and I'll put it in my garage until I can get a couple volunteers to help me move it down to the airport, and then we'll store it.
It's a good deal, I tell you, being able to use our system, all they care about's the motherboard.
Yeah, the two motherboards, there's one up in the head, and there's one down, down below, so that's the only thing they won't return.
This is not forklift-sized crate?
No, no, it's being delivered UPS, so it can't weigh over 100 pounds.
It's the terminal that, it's not the pump or anything?
Yeah, it's just the...
It's just the controls and everything.
It's the machine that you put the credit card in, and it's nothing but a tin box and a couple of motherboards and a place to put it.
And we did get the check from OT6.
Yeah, so it's not really a field dispenser, it's just a...
No, it's the card reader, basically.
Card reader, basically.
Good one. So you're going to leave when?
Friday morning.
All right, no flights for life and no...
Nothing, nothing urgent taking, taking place, and the phone will be transferred to Dan Green, and he'll be the man in charge for about a week. I should be back in a week.
I don't know if I informed the Board. Lynn DeGree, one of the Airport Board members, and I went out and repaired the hangar. Did we talk about that?
Yeah, I was there when you guys looked at the corner.
Yeah.
I didn't know you got it done.
Did I talk to Smith's hangar?
Yes.
We finally got that fixed?
I personally crawled up and...
Well, actually, it's not Dr. Smith's.
Not anymore, because he's old.
Okay, but this has been going on for multiple years?
Four years, four years, and the owner, I just happened to run into him in the clerk's office when he was doing the paperwork on the hangar, and he said, "Has he understood it that the county was liable to fix that and had been for the last four years?" And I said, "Yeah." So, we went out and looked at it, and then the next week, Lynn DeGree and myself and the new hangar owner's friend helped us, and we replaced three pieces of tin.
Yes, the new owner is Al Lavenue.
Yes.
So, good guy.
Does he live in here?
No, not, not yet. He is planning to move here full-time at some point, and he'd probably be a good guy to get on our board when, when he does move up. We'll see how that works out.
Yeah, so anyway, it was nice to get that done, because apparently that had been hanging over our heads for some years, and nobody seemed to want to deal with it, so...
We had multiple people who said they would, they volunteered to do it, and it just fell through the cracks.
Hawk is cheap, Jay.
Yeah, and, and...
Yeah, they can get 200 bucks an hour.
Yeah, and Johnny Smith is sort of a procrastinator.
Well, and as I understand it, wasn't his responsibility, the county damaged it, so it was county's responsibility.
Mower or...
Mower.
Maybe it's a mower, not a push mower.
So, it has been repaired, and the new owner's...
I am very glad to hear that.
The new owner is happy, I even remember if I had told you that or not, but anyway, so we did it.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
We want to do that on Commissioner Jenner, too.
Please help him throw the time.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, you want, you want comp time, Tom?
Surveyor could do it. I just don't understand, but hey, what do I have?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Keep the fly-in.
Have fun in Montana.
Montana.
Be good.
Thanks, Bob.
Next up is the Treasurer's Report, and I believe she's on her way.
And I would imagine IT is waiting in the wings.
Hey, Virginia.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
Fine.
Get in that shirt just to die for, I don't know, the bullet pattern's good.
You're not a potted plant today, Clint.
I candy, yes. May I ask a question?
If, when, when this says beginning balance, we're only talking about August, correct? Yes.
Okay, this is just the August statement. I was looking at affordable housing. So it would be fair to say there's been no activity in affordable housing for the month of August, that's all you could say from looking at this report? I would like to beat my cohort to the punch, anything out of the more?
I would have asked.
No.
I'm overweight, accept the report.
I was seconded.
Now we can talk about it.
Been moved and seconded to accept the report. Discussion. Hearing that?
There was a point we didn't think the report was going to happen.
Going to happen, that's right. Yeah, that's because of the...
Kind of semi-off the wall and inappropriate, but I'm looking at the balance at the end of August, and we have September, October, November, so we have four months left, and we're showing we have a balance of 5.66 million. Is that, is that, is that high for this time of year, or is it reasonable? Okay.
You said that most of the taxes come in about now.
Yeah, they're already done, so we're just barely collecting anything. November, we'll have our taxing sale, and it'll bring in X amount, whatever's left. I've already had to transfer some money to, to pay the bills, so keep, keep money in the checking account.
Yeah, and the budget projected still is going to be tapping that by a million or so.
And I'm the last person probably that should be asking you this. Grazing is a line item because there are county lands that we do lease for grazing, or no?
Grazing is money, it's, it's just an in and out account. We get an X amount of money for grazing.
Slush money.
No.
We're going to call it grazing.
They send us money for grazing, we send it to Tim Canterbury in Slida when we get it, so it's just an in and out.
Okay, who sends you money? Land, or cattleman?
State.
State? For grazing county lands, or?
Well, I'm assuming so, if that's what it's, it's our portion of it.
And it goes to Tim, he must be...
He's the one in charge.
Probably an open range issue.
Yeah, I don't know, I've never really looked into it.
A proportion to whoever.
We get it, we send it to him.
And I'll be honest with you, I never noticed it until today.
Yeah, it's just an in and out account, and it's not much money, you're not talking very much money, it's...
196 bucks.
Small.
Okay.
Further discussion, questions? Hearing that, we proceed to vote, all in favor approving August Treasurer's Report, say aye. Aye. Posed may, motion carries? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
You were easy today.
Thanks, Virginia. Yeah, don't let that get around.
You were doing a good job.
Didn't think you'd know.
I like this, this is the way it should be.
He's on his way.
Everybody's planning on 1:00.
I might get to Denver yet today.
Way, way to go.
Going up there today, too.
Are you?
Well, they got a detour now, you saw that, right?
No, where?
They're putting a third lane in like 25, it's going to take 10 years.
Have they started that? Maybe I'll go around.
Yes, just two days ago they started.
I like the round way anyway.
On 83?
Black Canyon, that's going to really pack it up, because it's only two lanes, where one going one way and the other.
What's that on that time, and I have to be anywhere?
Have to be there by 6:00.
West Coast, too. Were any pilots in the county that might can make that happen, but...
Don't know any pilots, huh?
None, apparently they're interested in the commuter flight. Wonder what people be willing to pay to fly?
You watch what happens when we get this jet A in here, and more people come, and they're going to want to, you know, go, I think a guy will see it profitable to make a loop between here, Pueblo, Garden City, up to Denver, make a bit, you know, whatever, even hopping over into San Luis Vas.
I've been to Garden City.
Tombstone's nearby. I'm just saying, Kansas gets involved.
Good morning, sir, how are you?
Good morning. There's a lot of people up here in the heart of Garden City.
Watching when I graduated you last, the meeting before last?
I did, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Sir. I apologize for not having the financials yet, but I'll get those emailed to you soon.
What have you been doing?
What's that? Right there. Oh, I'm glad you're not laughing at my pants.
No, we are not, sir. I asked a question for the previous guest, and that got my answer already.
Okay.
I did that, too, the other day. There's a question, and she comes with the answer.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
How are we?
We're doing well.
How is it?
Um, it's, that was good, that was very good.
It's okay.
Now who's on first?
Yeah, it being the black hole called IT.
Yes, in my, my little closet in the back room there.
Morning, Jeff.
It's not quite under the stairs, but it's okay.
Yeah, maybe we can get you a little set of stairs and put on your wall.
There we go. That's actually, the next, uh, next phase is to move back out into the plotter room, and just kind of give a little bit more space, so...
Right, good. Phone system?
Phone system is installed, we're going through some fine tuning processes. Everybody just has, is working out little, little kinks and little bugs the way they want it, setting up their either ringtones, and how their answering service works, where phone calls go when one person can't pick it up in the office, that type of thing. DHS didn't like the clerks, you know, answering the clerks' phones for a while, don't understand that, but...
I didn't understand it either. I thought they could help me out, but they didn't want to.
Just a team for you.
Yeah.
I told them that they, that you needed an answering service, and they just didn't like that either, so...
Good.
So we've had, we've had a little bit of adventure with that, but it's coming together. We're meeting with Jason today to work out some little more details, and we'll see how that goes.
And he spent a day here last week, hammered out some...
Yes, he did, yes, he did. The Jason and the tech Denton worked very hard to make certain everything was set up, really cleaned up our, how the phones are set up downstairs, so it's a lot, a lot more clear, it's very nice. Prepping us for, inadvertently prepping us for this fiber install, so, which is, which is moving forward, it's in the ongoing projects on that list there. Fiber install and the 911 will take up basically all of my time for the next month, so it'll be fun. Maybe 95% of the time.
And the E911's scheduled to come online?
E911 is scheduled to be installed, I believe, on, around the 21st, maybe the 27th. I have a, I'm sorry, I haven't written on my calendars, but the fiber install has to happen first, unfortunately. I have all of the tech, all of the, all of the equipment that we talked about last time I was here, it's all sitting in my office, it just arrived on Friday and yesterday, so I'll be installing that in the next few days and getting that set up.
Good.
So...
Cool.
We're moving forward, it's, it's an interesting challenge. I don't remember what else was on the list there. Oh, thank you. Yes, oh, we, I wanted to let you know, we did clean up that tower, the BLM tower, we had a BLM inspection two months, two, three months ago, they sent us a list of things that we needed to take care of, Roger Squire and I, and another, a ham radio tech who also works with the Road and Bridge, we all went up there and cleaned up significantly, so it's a lot, looks a lot cleaner.
Good.
Lot more streamlined. Yep, there's, those are the high points.
You're aware, not to interrupt you, sir, but speaking of towers, that we did make a deal with Sangre de Cristo Electric.
Okay.
We now own that tower that's up there.
Okay.
They now, as of yesterday...
Wow.
Have leased the top 10 feet of that for the next 25 years.
Wow, okay, that's good to know, I'll make a note, I'll put that into the...
So that tower now belongs to the county.
Records, okay. What about the land, is that moving forward?
It is moving, crawling forwards, but it's still...
Slow but sure.
It's still on the...
And they want to make it a 10-year process, I'll lose it.
I have heard that, I've heard that, that getting BLM land... I have heard that, I've heard that, that, uh, getting BLM land is, uh, quite involved, quite involved.
Unless BLM wants it to happen.
I see.
Then it can.
Then it's yesterday.
Yeah. Yeah, I happen to know two people who traded land with BLM. When BLM wanted the land, it went very quick, sure.
I see.
Shoes on the end of the foot.
But anyway, that's, that's kind of where we're at with that, but, uh.
Good to know that.
They did lease the top ten feet back from us.
All right.
Election?
Um, I start recording all of the election computers in the, in the ballot boxes tomorrow, so that's, um, wanted to let you know, I was gonna turn that on tomorrow.
Oh, you're gonna turn that on tomorrow?
I believe it's the seventh. So, okay.
But you can turn that on tomorrow.
All right, okay. Yeah, so that's, that's going into the process, so. But, uh, we have to record the ballot box and the computer systems that are gonna be running, working with the, uh, with the elections for, was it, uh, two months? Ninety days? Okay, two months before and thirty days after.
What, any issues with the new ones last time? I didn't hear of any.
And I store all of those, we store the hard drives that those are all recorded on for twenty-seven months? Okay.
So they come with, uh, replace, they come with a series of hard drives, or you have to buy them?
Oh, no, we have to buy them, yeah.
So every time it fills, or no?
Yes.
Are you having any challenges, or things that we can help with?
Um, just.
Your equipment up to date?
Everything's up to date, everything's moving forward, um, the IT credit card really helped a lot, the ability to do that, um. No, I'm just, uh, still really finding my footing and moving and figuring out how to triage time and energy for the different projects that have to happen.
Into the day you retire at ninety.
That's right. Oh, do I get to retire at ninety, this is good. Okay.
Computer replacements, I see you have a note on that, I'm assuming we'll see that in their individual budgets.
Yes, I sent an, I sent an email to all of the department heads outlining the need for computer replacements. Windows seven is no longer supported as of two thousand and twenty, we have a lot of XP computers that are running Windows seven, that can't be upgraded to Windows ten, or shouldn't be upgraded to Windows ten. Um, it's just gonna be a process of, of replacing those, I wanted to make certain that this was worked into the budgets as people, you know, move into the new year.
Could put mine up to you.
So now their line items, excuse me.
Yes.
Pursue that thought. Their line items on their budget's gonna show their computer needs, or is your budget gonna show their computer needs?
Their budgets are gonna show the computer needs. I can handle certain software and equipment's, uh, replacements, but, um. Unless, unless we were to take money from, from one budget and put it into my budget, uh, usually that's, that's in the, uh, department's budget.
And you could do that.
If we.
If we, if we had to sit down and, and work that out, yes.
You could gather up requirements, not just for computers, but the IT needs.
And that's, and that's what I'll be doing for, for my budget, um, for instance, replacing, uh, you know, different pieces of equipment that, that go out, that wear out over time. Um, replacing the, uh, the, the, the switch that was blown out by the lightning strike, that type of thing.
Department heads' budget for their own.
Right.
For certain things, like laptops, or.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, for instance, a, a printer cartridge replacements, that's gotta come out of, out of, uh, supplies and, and maintenance, that type of thing.
And then, well, there, let's say that. One of these clerks' offices, since she's here, wants a new computer, she puts that as a line item on her budget, that gets approved. She goes out and buys that herself, or do all purchases go through you?
I'll, I'll order it, set it up, install the software, do all the updates before it's, uh, before it's installed, and then I'll install it for her. But the, but the actual cost comes from that, from.
We don't have all these departments buying their own computers.
No, that would probably.
That would be disastrous.
Right, yeah. Wouldn't, wouldn't be productive, I don't think. Well, it'd be nice, you know, if they wanna.
You can't keep it standardized.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, okay, good.
And I, and I have actually had that discussion with different department heads, and this, this seems to be the best way that it works out.
I was gonna say, in the past, we let him know what we need, or let Chuck know before, and then when, and he would order it, and he would get it, and then he would actually pay the bill, but it would come out of our thing.
I like that way, that way we can standardize, he knows what he's talking about. Certain departments may need a different configuration of a computer, and you would know that, so I think that makes sense.
Good.
So, some, some departments need powerhouses, some departments need message, message centers, it's, the different, the different computer requirements is, are, uh, you know, they're very dynamic, thank you, appreciate that.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good job.
All right, thank you very much. Be well.
Rock on.
Holler.
As I was saying.
Thank you.
There's the, uh.
Now, to the her, her.
Man, you guys are just moving right along.
We're blitzing it, and we're gonna be done by ten.
Be careful.
Kelly, Kelly.
You might jinx us.
I jinxing you?
Well, we've got one commissioner report to come up, so we'll see how long that takes. Good morning, how are you?
She brought a bunch of things to sign.
I never even noticed that.
I didn't either.
But now that I hear it, it's.
So he's buying grass. Yeah, I know.
Oh, oh, you mean hay, sorry.
Cattle grass.
Grass. Do you like it?
This looks like new information.
Exactly.
That's what I asked, this is perfect.
Okay. And then there's just a lot of other things in there, if you want more of that, or no, um.
Yeah, I'll use this, and I'm gonna say some more, but this is the reference, so this is great, and you got the pilt, uh, turns out it's, uh, last year, no county and the state got it, right?
Right, and, and as it turns out, it's when it's, only when it's available, because the, the, the pilt itself, Title One is guaranteed, which they show you the amount, and I have some sheets in there that show what they said and what we received or receipted. Um, only if it's extra is, is the road and bridge.
Right.
Given any, and the fire money as well.
And it is not connected in any way, I want this on the record, to any campgrounds, and how many campgrounds are, or how they're used, or whatever, it's because we border the forest on both sides and down in Wetmore. And there's lots of traffic potentially in each different site, so it's not site specific.
Correct.
This is the money they were wanting to know about.
Yes.
Well, and, and you know, it just tells buyer to beware, that, you know, if there's something that's there.
It's only thirty thousand bucks when we get it, and that doesn't, that doesn't buy advice thirty loads of road base.
No, it's not much, no.
Okay, well, let's move on, we hammered that yesterday till we were all.
Till we were all sorry. Thank you, Donna, that's good job.
And then.
Good information, for sure.
These, um, had not been initialed yet, because I'll start with those.
Initials, sorry?
Uh, on, yeah, yeah, either way.
Just, uh, these are just vouchers.
Yeah.
So I asked you, now may I ask a question?
Is it hard?
Is it a trick question?
Yeah.
It's a good nine-thirty question.
Okay.
Are the departments starting to turn in, or have they turned in their budget requests?
Protect your buddies.
I threw you under the bus, I didn't mean to, I apologize.
Yeah, every, everybody seems to like the new, the new program, and, and it's, you know, we're coming across a lot of weird things, that it's nothing that Chuck didn't do or did do. But new things, and, and once he, he hardcoded it to that, that we're gonna have to find a way that he can change that and, and evolve, or make it so that we can evolve, this, the kids, the kids council was one. When he ran that and, and put it together, it's not on there, so I could not print her a sheet, so I was whiting out and just sent her one for her to do, so that I, you know, just, but just, yeah, just flukes that we can't mesh, because things change and ebb and flow all the time. So that'll be something that we've got to figure out how to make, but I think people are enjoying using it, and it, and it is real quick and easy, and, and not so. Not that budgeting is ever fun, but maybe a little more fun.
Intuitive, I think, news is.
But, uh, but yeah, it's pretty, there are a lot of people, um, the questions have more or less stopped, so I think most everybody's gotten to where they're feeling, you know, almost done.
So did Planning and Zoning really put on their budget for a roller coaster?
You know, but a carousel, yes, not the roller coaster, that just, you know, a little circusville.
What town just built one? It said on the news the other day.
I don't know, Burlington's got the original, first one ever made.
And, uh.
And since you brought it up, sir, and we're busy, can you tell me, did they ever trade a carousel and a merry-go-round? There is a difference.
Can I give you an absolute wild guess?
Yes.
One where the horses go up and down, and one where they don't.
Ah, that's a pretty good guess, I didn't know this until I researched.
Where they grab the brass ring, and one where they don't. I don't know, I'm just thinking what could be different.
I never knew either, until I researched it, it's the direction of travel. A merry-go-round goes one way, and a carousel goes the opposite.
Wow.
Now, there, I just didn't need to know.
Who knew?
And the original.
Yeah, why are we doing?
Is that based on the same thing like the northern hemisphere and southern hemisphere, how water goes down the toilet?
No, I think it's more like which direction they drive on the road, carousels came from England.
Well, that is an easy trivia.
There you go, yeah, works for me, that'll be part of the story.
Merry-go-rounds go the other way, they're in a park.
Is housed down in Burlington, in a building.
All right.
Okay, Ms. Finance.
Only quarter to ten.
But that's, that's, everything's.
I didn't marry go around going.
Work you did, I meant to dismiss the time that we have.
I used to.
At the fainting couch.
I don't even do that very well, like trying.
I hope this is not an ongoing process with other people, but want a constituent to ask these questions, or entitle the answers, and I really appreciate it as quickly and as efficiently as you put it together.
Well, and, and, and I never knew if the road and bridge was guaranteed or no, and it is absolutely not. And the, just like the fire money, it's not, it's only if it's available, the only part is the Title One, and then the school, the Title Two, the SRS, which.
They just scrape up whatever they can afford, leftover.
Yeah, that they do, and so apparently for a few years, it was about the same, and then the others, so, so I learned something from looking it all up, so.
Good.
And gave you an insomnia package, so who knew?
That's good, that's.
Well, in twenty eighteen, uh, legislature, at, at the federal level, introduced legislation to reduce pilt money by tons, didn't go anywhere, but.
But yeah, it'll be targeted again, yeah.
Paying a lot.
So, yeah, I learned some stuff, I thought pilt money was countywide, I didn't realize there were different titles, so the school gets a chunk, road and bridge gets a chunk, general fund gets a chunk.
And they would have to divide it up.
And then you had said they were just doing that pilt that with, for the fire money that they were not giving, so see, that's been a part of that as well, that was extra, and they, they deemed that they did not have additional, and it cut that.
You can't count on it.
On there, but yeah, absolutely, never count on it.
So we're doing okay?
Yeah, just cruising along, September falls here.
It's really fallish.
Yeah, it is fallish, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm realizing it's taken me a while, but the, the work generated out of your office, the assessors' office, clerk's office, it's just amazing, I mean. I look at that voucher package every month, I go, my God.
We are the county seat.
That's right, that, yep, there you go, goes, that's what makes it go around, like the carousel. See, look at that, we just drove that right around together.
Isn't that amazing? Thank you.
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you. One more notch on our belt there.
Uh, any unfinished business, gentlemen? I had on my computer moved the S brand item to unfinished business, but we can certainly handle it in there.
Okay. Who will be relaying this back to the?
I am.
Just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure it didn't get dropped through the cracks.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I won't be. Uh, no, that's okay. Any unfinished business? Move on to new business? Review the contract, uh, for the economic development, or economic strategic, it is economic development, strategic plan. Uh, we had postponed that yesterday until today, so Mr. Kenda, I'll defer to you.
All right, uh, did get ahold of her, talked to her for an hour or so.
Okay, her being?
Cheryl Trent of S Brand, actually, it's, uh, consulting. And, um, they, uh, she, there is no sacrosanct timeline, there is no sacrosanct, uh, uh, process, and there's, and there, she is very willing to tear up what we got and add whatever we want. So I asked her to send me a soft copy of the contract, so that we can do that, and, and get in the right interviewees that we think ought to be interviewed, for example, the Justice Center piece, et cetera. And, uh, and the first, and also, we'll, we need to make sure it's clear that she wants to interview each department head to get perspectives, and, uh, that needs to be included, and then modify, and we'll make sure it's flexible enough, I, based on that, what are we gonna do next? Not instead of, this is a recipe, and I'm not, and I overlook some findings that she may have. So we got the timeline down, we can, I asked her, we'd like to be able to vote on this thing, or sign it, and get it in the move, uh, on the fifteenth in Wetmore. So if we don't do that, I mean, it'll be what it is, if it's the end of the month, but, uh, it only impacts her timeline on when she's gonna do some interviewing, and around her schedule that she currently has. Turns out she does do business up here with a lot of different businesses and people, apparently, so she's been here up and down, so she knows the value a little bit. So we've got time to, uh, take a look at this, and we ought to understand it, but, and, and I'd like to pass it to the department heads as well, so they know what's coming.
What was her name again?
Cheryl Trent.
With an S.
Yeah, with an S, it's with an S, yeah.
And, uh, just.
Let me give you the title.
I can get it right in my notes.
Correct, it's S Brand Consulting LLC.
S Brand?
S, like an S, capital S, capital B, Brand Consulting.
And, um. What is this for?
It's for the, it's called the Strategic Planning, um, Consulting Services Agreement, that, it's a strategic vision document, and, for the county.
For the economic development.
For economic development, and the fu- future economic development's a better way to say it.
It's the ready grant, isn't it?
Yes, and it's the thing that we looked at, wow, it's been months ago. I think it's gonna be fine, given that we've got a pretty good strategic vision with our Justice Center and some other things that are going on, it's, we probably ought to dovetail together, and I told her this morning, we're not gonna do it. We want the county to buy into the whole thing, everybody needs to know it, I said, we've got ranchers, we've got mining interests up here, we've got, uh, farmers, we've got, uh, tourism, we've got lots of industry, and we want some, and we, but we wanna control that. So that it's good growth, and, and, but it's not the vision of an enlightened few, it's the vision of all of us, so.
What additional stuff are you anticipating here? You mentioned the airport.
Yeah, and, um, and the Judicial Center, the, uh, uh, there's some other things like, from a tourism industry point of view, interview a few people, she's gotta get to the ranchers, too. But what that means is, we will be having her come in here and host a couple meetings, and she understands she's got that amount of money to deal with, and that means she's gonna change the priorities on some of the things she thought she was gonna do, because that was a cookbook, uh, as it turns out, boilerplate more or less. Of, of process, now, it's a proven process, but we can modify it to fit us.
So you're just wanting her to include more entities and people that she's gonna talk to?
Right, she, she's wanting to talk to a couple people and, and read a bunch of stuff, but, and Owen, I asked for the list, Charles Vogel did send her a list of people that they thought she ought to be talking to. So we're gonna get that list, I'll give it to, I'll pass that out with the proposed contract as it exists to everybody, and then we can see who ought to be on the list.
I think your stance on bipartisanship, and what I mean by that is, all of the.
Stakeholder.
Interests in the county need to be taken into consideration, not just.
Right.
This group or that group, it needs to be, so. this group or that group, it needs to be, so.
That way.
No, I absolutely agree.
And I pointed out to her, you know we're not on the way to anywhere, we're not unveiled, you know, we gotta wanna get here to get here, and everybody has their own reasons for being here, and so they have a vested interest in why, what, what would make them stay?
I would think both editors of both papers would be people that she should talk to.
Sure.
'Cause they kinda have their fingers on the pulse of the.
And it might revolve into another couple people for her to look at, and that's a task, see, that's something we would write into this new version of this contract.
So she's gonna write a contract and send it to us?
No, she's sending me the exact copy, soft copy of that, that we can modify, and, and put redline in it, and let her respond back with, okay, here's what it is.
I have software that could make it into a Word document.
Ah, she, she, it's easier, she's got the hard copy.
I guess as long as, I mean, you have to be aware that there's a certain dollar amount that we got.
That's, that's what I just said, it's only that amount, and so she has to ship, and we, we can ask for the world, and she's gonna give us reality, then we'll help prior, we have to make an iteration with it.
I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, yeah, outstanding, I had a conversation over the holiday weekend about economic development, and I appreciated it, because it really addressed two things that I have not heard bandied about since I've become a commissioner. And, and this individual, who came from the economic development world, for small communities, believed that economic development in this county really needs to start with jobs and an improved school system. He said, if you can do those two things, I guarantee you, you will have economic development, people will move here again for the school system, and people will have a reason to move here to try to make a living.
I don't think anybody, anybody could argue with that comment.
Right, but I haven't heard it, I have not heard one person say the key to economic development are those two things.
No, they take them separate, like the school system, everybody loves the, wanna help the kids, right?
Sure.
Gotta have a good school, if you do, you do attract people, and you know, question that, but it's never been tied, how do we tie it together?
Yeah.
So that's where you get some cash from the school system, and, you know, I mean, there's ways to, to leverage this into a plan that fits all.
I agree with that, but then you have to think about, well, jobs, so how do we get more jobs? We have to have something for them to come work, which means we have to entice businesses, home businesses, whatever.
Or potential for it.
Exactly, so that they can come here and earn a living, send their kids to school, and that type of thing. So at all times, I mean, it's a giant circle.
Like you say, and I agree, it's not, it's not new information, it's just information I have not heard sitting in this commissioner chair since I took office.
Okay, my time's up, Tom, I'm done.
So I'd like to see.
One, let you know, it's five to ten.
So then maybe I can have some time.
Yeah.
So, I would like to see ju, how we create jobs in this county, that's economic development, and that, I think, needs to be involved in this, as well as improving our school districts, so people can move here. Now, is it our job to improve the school district? No, I don't think so necessarily, but.
Well, we have to support the improvement and the efforts, yeah, that's integrated.
And by their own mission.
And even if they're a separate taxing district, we need to be involved in the schools as you have.
As they are involved.
Exactly.
So, I, I'd just like to see that stuff included in this.
That's great, and that's why we're gonna circulate, each department head will have an idea too, maybe something else come out.
That's a good idea. Good job.
Yeah, thank you, I, I feel like the county needs to take ownership, because it was a county grant that did it.
It's not consulting that's gonna tell us what to do.
Right. Okay, anything else as far as this, so we will leave this on the table for now, correct? Any timeline about?
We'll look at it again on Wednesday, or the Wetmore meeting, and if it's ready, it's ready, if it's not, we'll slip it into the following meeting.
By the way, just FYI, 'cause I'm thinking you'll be emailing stuff around, where I'm going is not the jungle, I have internet and phones, if free to send or call on anything while I'm on vacation.
You're not gonna?
Sir?
Pool?
I may have to be.
He's going by himself.
I may be with a can of cologne reading it, but, don't hesitate to send me.
I don't wanna read about you in the newspaper.
Don't worry about it.
Or the Mexican newspaper.
Yeah, good.
Don't worry.
Um, so you helped me understand where we go from here now, as far as your perception, she's gonna send you
I'll have the soft copy, yes, and I'll send that to everybody.
That's why I was mentioning you'll send it to us.
The department. Yes, and I'll send the, you know, her proposed attachments. We'll, we will modify to get those, I'm gonna ask for comments, and, and here's what, redlining is, from your perspective, what would you like to have included?
Okay, I've read this, and if I didn't know what was going on, I wouldn't have.
Doesn't mean anything, doesn't.
So how are they gonna know? They're gonna look at, are you gonna send them a little couple letters or something to say?
I'm gonna send it, I'll tell this is. That's just a contract, all I wanna do is, you know, you have a vision for the county, they just have to think, all we need is some comments. And, and a timeline, they can see that, but they need to see this to see that it doesn't amount to nothing.
Right, this, I'm just, if, if you sent me this, I would look at it and go.
Yeah, what am I gonna be, okay, yeah, no, I'm not asking them to do a contract.
What is this? Uh, you're asking for input about.
On the content that we're gonna put in.
Okay.
I'll send that out.
Well, I really appreciate you doing that, as, I know commissioners does, because we just don't need another border plate study.
That goes down in the, down in the drawer here, that we don't look at, it would waste the money, that's the one thing I have an aversion to.
If somebody says, hey, did you do it? Yeah, we did it.
And then we filed it, paid no attention.
But we wanna own it and live it and make it happen.
Correct.
So.
And the only way to do it is for us to direct it, tell them what we want, so they can get their results.
We're not waiting for them to spoon feed us, what they believe.
Good job, brother. Excellent.
Put yourself in for a raise.
Uh, any other new business come before the board?
I don't have.
Public comment?
Okay, I'll make sure you don't miss anybody in the bad bro.
Public size.
Uh, hearing none, uh, we will adjourn this meeting, I'm sorry, we will.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Thank you, not adjourn, but, because we don't wanna adjourn the meeting, but we'll move into executive session, I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session.
For the purpose of.
Hold this up real quick, bear with me, um, under our guidelines of legal advice, that would be Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B.
Just a minute.
And. It is nine fifty-eight AM on September the fifth. For the record, I am the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, required by the open meetings law, this executive session will be electronically recorded. Present at this executive session are the following people, Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Kenda, Secretary to the Board of County Commissioners, Kelly Camper, County Attorney Clint Smith, Administrative Assistant Brenda Gady, and Custer County Sheriff.
Whatever his name is.
Shannon Byer. The executive session is for the purpose of discussing a, a legal issue with counsel. I would caution each participant to confine all the discussion to the stated purpose of the executive session, and that no formal action may occur in the executive session. If at any point in the executive session, any participant believes the discussion is going outside the proper scope of the executive session, please interrupt the discussion and make an objection.
And this won't be recorded either? Legal doesn't.
Oh, sorry.
That was your trip, Joe.
It was excellent, it was a good time.
So we're off?
Hold on, I have to turn this.
That was not, I was, thought we were.
I didn't read at all, but he does make mention in this.
I, I'm back on.
Yeah, that was sort of the cover thing, and then there was, there were some attachments to it that didn't come through.
He thinks that there's a veil of money.
Sweet taste, man.
Absolutely.
Ken?
Thank you, good to see you again, Shannon.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. All be good.
So, does your big game hunting ever include giraffes?
It did not, we saw some giraffes.
Well, the reason I'm, 'cause I know a guy in Pueblo who built a home, he's a big game hunter, he has a room where his giraffe was on the basement floor, and then the head came up, threw into the living room, and he's trying to sell the house, and it's.
That'd be hard to sell.
It is, so if you ever want a giraffe, there's the room.
'Cause I'm sure it's there.
Thank you, sir, we're still live streaming our meeting, the time is now ten forty-six, executive session has been concluded. Participation in the, the participants in the executive session were Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Kenda, County Attorney Clint Smith, Secretary to the Board, Kelly Camper, Administrative Assistant to the Board, Brenda Gady, and Custer County Sheriff, Byer. For the record, if any person who's participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, more than any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Attorney Smith, would you like to make a statement as to the contents of the meeting?
Yes, for the record, it was, the executive session was for the purpose of giving legal advice to the commissioners with the assistance of the sheriff who had material information. We stayed on topic the entire time, no decisions were made during the session, I'm not asking the commissioners to make any decision in this regular session.
Thank you, sir. Any other statements or of concerns for the record? Hearing none, then we will, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries, meeting's adjourned, thank you, have a great vacation. Uh, yeah, I thought you were leaving the six, coming back to six.